Board of Education meeting for August 29, 2017. Will call.
Yeah, here.
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 Anderson, Stukey?
Here.
Motion to adjourn.
It's over here. It's a little one.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're talking about the no call. Option of the agenda is their motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Second. Will call.
Yeah, yes.
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 Point three approval of the August meeting, 2017 meeting minutes. It's here, a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Will call.
Yeah, Stukey?
Yes.
Yes.
Two point one, we project right for school education. Two point two classified.
No.
Nobody in public participation.
No.
So nobody in public participation on the agenda. Work session.
Mr. President, work session. Our first item tonight is a report card presentation. We have almost all of the data for this report card. We're still missing a couple of things, so we'll share it tonight, but because of that, we wanted to give as much recourse as we could. So John, panel, Ian, for your company, Chuck Wiggins, the floor is over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, board members. I appreciate the time to see with you. Thank you, sir.
There.
There we come.
Can you see that? Okay, great. Over the course of the last month or so, we've been looking at the data that's been coming to us from the state through the secure data center and doing an analysis of what we would project our report card scores are going to be. So we'd just like to take a few minutes of your time to present those to you. Remember, these are projections and that as the state continues to get data in, they adjust these scores and adjust the individual things that happen with them. So first thing we wanted to talk to you about was the achievement category, and these are the indicators that we all remember of all the different grades, reading, math, and science social studies tests when they occur. So the first ones that we present to you are the third, fourth, and fifth grade, and you can say, see that we've met the indicators across all of those grade levels and all the subject areas. You can see our percent proficient versus the state standard and whether we met that indicator. Then as we go on into the upper grades, we look at six, seven, eight, same type of tests, and then we go all the way through until we get to that reading test in eighth grade. That's the first indicator that we haven't met. We have that at a seventy-two point seven percent proficient versus the state standard of an eighty.
Do we have questions now?
Absolutely.
So did something change with, with the type of testing there, or what is your analysis? You knew I was gonna ask.
Well, yeah. It's still, it's still the same test from last year, and we've actually improved that score from last year because our score was sixty.
It was sixty something.
Yeah, it was almost a ten point jump.
So this is a result of that change of the test two years ago?
Exactly.
So we're making that.
We're still.
The trajectory is going forward.
Correct. And we're at least looking at an increase, so we're on the right plane for that one. So still, still working to get up to that eighty percent.
But it was a, a ten percent jump.
It was nearly a ten, ten point raise from last year to this year.
Sixty-two point three last year.
Okay, and seventy-two seven this year.
So what are we doing different that is showing, that's, that's increasing our scores? Like what, what are the teachers doing different that's helping us?
One of the most important things that we've done in English Language Arts as we've transitioned to these new tests is emphasize informational writing because to prove, to read, you have to be able to write on the new state tests. And that, that was a big change for us going back through years when we first had the part test and now we moved into the air test. It's, we're still working on that writing trajectory, and that's where we're really concentrating our efforts on in the grade.
And are we backing that up into our elementary grades? So we're starting.
Yes, we're working on that process all the way down through second and third grade. What are the standards for writing each time and as they change how we're doing that?
Great thinking.
Sure. And then we look at our high school indicators. We can see that we met government, history, English one. We did not meet English two, algebra one, geometry, and math one, and we did meet biology. Actually, our original scores came out and we had not met biology, but then they actually rescored our tests because across the state they had missed a whole portion of the test and scored them incorrectly. So that actually changed to a met standard about three weeks ago.
Correct.
So when we're looking at, again, we've got our ELA scores there, the English two. Again, we're trying to concentrate on our writing, but note that this is also an, almost a ten percent increase.
It was eighty. There was something one point three last year.
From last year and just point four below what the eighty percent was. So we really feel like we're, we're right there on the cusp of that in English two. Algebra one and geometry, we're still working with.
At geometry, we had a sixty-eight point six, so we have a slight increase there. Algebra, we had a seventy-nine point three last year, which actually met the indicator because the indicator was lower than eighty last year. This year, everything was raised to eighty, so we did not meet the indicator. We dropped a couple of points on that. So those are the areas that we're definitely gonna have to look at if we come in here and get that.
Is this that group of kids that we altered some of the ways that we were offering our math with skipping?
As far.
It is and it isn't because regardless of whether we're altering, if you look at these numbers, for instance, if you look at the algebra one number at five sixty, we don't have any classes of five sixty. So this, this would include all eighth graders that would be taking algebra. So that, well, we, well, we did have an alteration in how we were doing our math and when we went to our conference standards and all students took sixth as opposed to skipping seventh and eighth, it doesn't count for why this score is where it is because if still every child was taking geometry, so if we had an eighth grader taking geometry, they would fall within this five twenty, or if we had a seventh grader taking algebra, they fall within the five sixty. So it's all children regardless of building and grade level.
So even though we're saying that's a high school test, if there's a junior high student who's taking one of those tests, their results are actually counted in that way.
Okay, okay.
And then the math one was a new class this year. That was our integrated math.
Yes, integrated math.
Typically, students who are on an IEP that are not yet ready for algebra one coming out of eighth grade will go into our integrated math one course.
As we move through the indicators, then, we've looked at elementary, the middle grades and the high school. The last indicator is the gifted indicator, and we are not going to meet that again, indicator again this year because of the performance index, which is the part that I put up here for you. We're supposed to be hitting a one seventeen point zero in performance index, and you can see that we're at a one fifteen. What that, how the state figures that is they take each of our students, whoops, sorry about that. They take each one of the students who are in that gifted cohort for what tests they're taking, and they look at how they scored, they present that out with points, and then they give you your performance index score. That's also compared to our gifted input points and our gifted value added. At this point, we don't have any value added to report on because they have not loaded any of that data, so we can't tell you that part, but we can see here with the performance index that we're not gonna miss it, although this is an increase over last year. We had a one fourteen performance index for our gifted cohort, and this year we've increased that point to a one fifteen. And we've been working with the teachers on what the state says we have to do. We have to get eighty percent of our students in this range, so they have to score a five or higher because there is an advanced plus. Those are coming from our accelerated students. We have to get eighty percent of our gifted students to that level, and you can see currently if we add these two together, we're at about seventy percent right now. So where we have our bubble is right here in accelerated. We need to be pushing about ten percent of these kids from accelerated into advanced to get this performance index up to the one seventeen level that we need.
And the other, the other area that hurts us a lot are those thirty-one untested kids.
Yes.
Those are students, the majority of which were, were opt outs at all because that's thirty-one kids that probably would have scored accelerated or advanced or advanced plus. So instead, we get zero points for them instead of points.
Even though they say that an untested child does not hurt you, the only place that that is not true is when they're calculating performance index because they're basically, basically worth zero. So we don't get credit for their performance.
What percentage did you say needed to score advanced?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
And then the last part of achievement are that indicator totals. So we take all of the elementary, all of the junior high, intermediate, the high school, the gifted indicator, and you add that up and you get a indicator total. So we met nineteen out of twenty-five indicators. That's a seventy-six percent for a grade of C. And last year, we met twenty-four out of twenty-nine for an eighty-two point eight. The reason for this drop is we lost all those OGD indicators that were still in the report card last year. With this year's report card, all of those OGT indicators went away, and we were meeting all of those previously, so we went down a little bit in percent.
And then next year, because we're losing social studies in fourth and sixth.
That number.
That'll be two more indicators that we're gonna lose that we need all the time. So next year's results are gonna be, we have to really push to be able to keep where we are. We're losing, we know we're gonna lose two indicators that we do very, very well on.
Because the twenty-five's gonna go down to twenty-three as we lose those social studies tests.
Correct.
And then the last part of achievement is overall district performance index where they look at all students in the district, do the same thing with the number of all the different levels of the test, and they present that all out to give you your performance index total over here, which is current, we are, we are projecting at a one oh one point seven. That's going to be an eighty-four point eight percent as a grade, which puts us right in the middle of the B range for the performance index. Last year, we were at a ninety-seven point nine, so we've definitely seen an increase there for the entire district. Then the achievement final grade, so they take all the indicators and they take the performance index, they present it all out, and for that total percentage will be in the B range because we're gonna be at three point three one three. So all of those combined will be a grade of C. The next topic up is gap closing, and these are our subgroups, and we're measuring how well we're doing at closing their black gaps with the general population. So we're looking at subgroups such as economically disadvantaged, African Americans, students with IEPs, any of those different subgroups that we have a qualifying number of students, and they figure that all out for English Language Arts and for math. So here you see the gap closing for English Language Arts proficiency, math proficiency, again with all those subgroups figured in. And then when they do it, they also include graduation rate. So of those three parts, you can see from English Language Arts, sixty-seven point six, from math, eighty-nine point four, from graduation points, sixty-six point seven, giving us a preliminary score of seventy-four point six, which puts us at the top end of the C range for gap closing, which is the same score that we received last year.
Right, last year we had a seventy point eight, so we brought this up four points this year.
So we went from seventy point eight to seventy-four point six. The next part of the report card is the K through three literacy measure, and they actually take the three different buildings that contribute to this, which would be Clear Creek, Dennis, and Five Points. So I'll be showing you three different buildings, and they, they do each of them separately. So here you can see Clear Creek with a grade of B, sorry. This year, they're at seventy, fifty-one point nine. Last year, they were at seventy-seven point zero, so that's a drop, but we have a little problem here. If you'll notice, there's no first graders reporting here. So Cindy Howard is in the process of getting the state to find our first graders because those first grade scores have to go into this. When I first saw this, I checked in Dennis and Five Points to see if they got counted there. Nope. You'll see there at Dennis, there's no first graders. The first graders are just missing and reporting right now. So we're trying to figure out with the state where they're reporting. So here you see Dennis's score at a C at forty-four point one. Last year, they were at a thirty-three point one, so we've had a ten percent increase in their score. Five Points also at a C at a thirty-five point five, and last year, they were at a forty-nine point six, so we're seeing a decrease there. Again, we're, these are preliminary numbers, and we're really wanting to see where those first graders come in, which building area they're gonna be reported at so we can accurately reflect those scores in the K through three literacy. So overall, right now, without the first graders in there at all, it looks like we're at forty-three point six percent, which puts us in the C range for that report card indicator. And last year, we were at forty-seven point four. Again, we're looking at that decrease and wondering how first graders are gonna contribute to that.
Can you report that back to us once you find the first graders?
Yes.
Information?
Yeah. I asked Cindy about it today, and she was gonna call up there again, but as of this afternoon, she's still had no response for that. And she's been trying to get a response since last week to figure out where they are.
Do you ever foresee, now that we're required that our juniors take the ACT, do you ever foresee that being part of the report card?
It is. It's all, it's, it's in the prepare for success.
Oh, it is.
Part of the report card. That is reporting on our high school and how those students are ready for college level courses or the workforce. So we'll be talking about that in just a minute.
Okay.
The next area of the report card that we don't have any reporting on is called progress, and that's actually the value added measure. And again, that, that information has not populated at all. That is the last piece of the information that typically comes from the state because it's such an adult formula. John, you just checked today.
It's huge, yes, I just checked today just to make sure it wasn't out there, but it's huge. I mean, it takes into account every test, every grade, everything from all the schools, all the grade levels, every test, and then they, they create these huge crazy formulas and spreadsheet, and then from that, they take pluses and minuses. But the value added scores, the, it's, the four parts of it are, there's an overall score, there's a gifted score, there's students with disabilities, and then there's the lowest twenty percent achievement. And those are the areas that, that we typically have struggled with here a little bit, the students with disabilities in the lowest twenty percent, and we've been working on that a lot, trying to get those up. So, but really, I just to see how we're gonna deal with those pieces.
And then the next part is the overall graduation rate, which we just got.
Correct.
Monday.
Yeah.
They finally reported that. So you see, right now, we have a ninety-five point six as an overall score in graduation rate, which is NA for that part.
And we, we actually went down in that from a ninety-seven point nine, but it doesn't take much, one student, two students that, for some reason, they graduated within four years to, to have that go up or down. These are recorded a year in arrears because they have the, the graduation rate for the sixteen, seventeen school year, that, that window is open until the end of October. So they're still reporting the graduation rate from the last year. So for the report card, you'll see, these are for the ninth graders who've entered in two thousand thirteen and graduated by two thousand and sixteen. So they run a year in arrears on graduation rate. So we had four hundred and fourteen graduates in two thousand and sixteen and four hundred and thirty-three students that entered ninth grade in that from two thousand and thirteen. So we had ninety students that, for some reason, didn't graduate in four years. And last, like I said, and then the next slide is the five-year graduation rate. So basically, that takes anybody that entered in two thousand and twelve and graduated in two thousand and sixteen. So there were four hundred and sixteen of those graduates in two thousand and fifteen and then two, four hundred and twenty-two now at ninety-eight point six. So we stayed about the same on that, our five-year graduation rate, because they pretty much. And those are two that we typically pick up pretty easily in A four because we, we don't, at least going back as far as I can see, we haven't dropped over ninety-five percent of graduation rate.
And then the prepare for success, which we were mentioning with the ACT. You see, this is gonna be a new one for us, and we have the number of students that have earned a remediation free score on all parts of the ACT and how many points we get for that, and then the number of bonus students that count an additional point three bonus points because they also earned a three or higher on at least one AP exam, and then they give us those points. So right now, as we look at those totals, this is based on what we earned this year, and last year, we were at a sixty-nine point four. We were a little bit concerned about this going into the year because we've never had a full grade ACT, so this was, it was a little nerve wracking for us to sit back and see how this came out, but it came out very well for us, and I, I think Kyle would agree with that. He mentioned that before.
Twenty-three point one average. And in years past, with just having students making the choice to take it, we're at like twenty-four point three to twenty-four point seven. So we dropped a little bit more than a point having mandated every student to take it.
That shocks me.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
We were very pleased.
I expected around twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Then you add in the first time students are taking with the Chromebooks.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, and so I, I was, we got, when we seen that, if we get involved, we were extremely pleased, yeah.
Did we have an increase in the students that are taking our ACT prep class?
Well, we did an additional program this year when we run in Torch Prep.
Torch Prep. We have, we've.
The practice test helped.
Yeah, the practice test helped. We did early fall Torch Prep and the students, but we didn't have a ton of students that really.
Signed up.
That signed up for that as far as to make that, make the practice group. Our, our college prep ACT class is, as I say, pretty steady as far as the whole.
It's full.
It's full. It's as full as it can be, but it's never dropped a little low either. So we had, we had four hundred and eighty-four students taking the ACT or SAT the year before, five hundred and fifty-nine this year. We had, and the funny thing is, we had two hundred and sixteen students scored the, the three or higher both years. So the eight, the thirty was both years, it was the same number of students that scored three or higher. So that's good.
So previously with our scores, did the three or above on their AP exam count for extra points?
Yes.
So that's always been the same?
Well, it was, it's only been two years that they've had them this, this part.
Since we started counting.
Correct, yeah.
Interesting. That just really shocked, shocks me. I'm glad, so I thought we'd see a big decrease too.
They did really well.
That's awesome.
We were very pleased.
Yeah.
It's not wanting to go. Except the last one.
Any other general questions?
Could you go back to the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go way back.
Way back. The way back question.
The very front, I think it's probably some question.
Keep going.
It was like one of the first ones.
Okay.
Sorry. There you go. So within the elementary, what accounts for the big discrepancy in terms of, let's say, fourth grade, for example? We had four hundred and fifty-three take social studies and reading, but not three hundred and ninety-six in math. Why there's such a large group of students missing from?
Well.
Compact.
We have about seventy kids right here who actually take fifth grade.
And then there's a bunch of fifth graders that took sixth grade.
That's because this is where really the large amount of, of subject accelerators happen, about before this grade level, but right at fourth grade, so we use them here, but you pick them up down here.
And then if you go to the sixth grade, that's the same, you'll see the sixth grade, five hundred and twenty-seven, so we had seventy more sixth graders, you know, tests, math tests being taken in the math, because there were quite as many sixth graders taking the seventh grade test.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
Yes.
We were actually in here for our board meeting a while ago when you, I think we had the sixth grade building present, and the teachers were talking about they had access to some sort of data that they were pulling specifically what the students were missing, and I don't remember if it was on the report card or if it was off of tests that they were taking, and so they were differentiating off of that. Was that off of the report card or was that, I think it was in social studies possibly? They were working as a team to do this?
Yeah, those are their common assessments. I'll let you go ahead and guess.
If they do common assessments and they're pulling data from different strands, so if they see that there was a strand that's weak, they're gonna target that strand.
So are they able to, like I'm looking at the eighth grade reading, are the, do the teachers have access to the areas that we're missing, like the gaps that we're seeing here?
So they can see, for instance, if a student is weak in informational text. And I wanted to add in, you had asked about the eighth grades, some changes in the eighth grade, what, what may have caused different, different, different scores. We did change the schedule of the junior high last year. They're working on a different type of schedule. We used to block Language Arts where they had a period that was somewhat reading and another period that was somewhat writing. What we've done is we've combined that into one ELA period. In so doing, we had six expert teachers that we moved out into different areas. So for instance, some of our former ELA teachers are now teaching social studies. So those are teachers who are trained in reading, they're able to, to help the kids with the informational text, they're also able to, to work with the students on writing projects because they have the background in that area.
Yeah.
So I think, in my opinion, some of that has contributed to the, to the rise of ten points, that we have some former ELA teachers teaching social studies in, in that area that were licensed one A teachers. We don't have a lot of them left, but they, they are tools.
Yeah.
And then we decided also say, as we look at, for example, at that sixth grade social studies and how well they did because of those common assessments, we are in the process of rolling out a new technology program that we purchased that has area-like assessment item banks that they can pull from to help them pinpoint those areas when they create their common assessments, because what we heard from the teachers was, we're not always capable of creating the right question. So we were able to find this resource for them, so we're rolling that out this year for A to help them beef up those common assessments to do that data analysis.
And would that be like professional development that you're helping?
Yes.
So they don't have to.
So December forty-nine, they're gonna be taught that lesson.
That's great. That's great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Mr. President, three point three committee reports. We're gonna start off with, we actually have three committees in the last couple of weeks meeting. I'll give the safety committee.
Yes, we have a meeting on August ninth. I had a huge amount of.
I had a huge amount of people there, it was myself, it was Heather Bauer and Emily Geisel. One of the unfortunate things is we have to try to, you know, get these committees in, but at the beginning of the year, beginning of August, it is so hard to get people to come. So we're working on trying to get that scheduled a little bit better. Uh, but Emily gave us an update on our cybersecurity stuff. Uh, we're doing some stuff that's trying to, uh, train teachers to not click on things they shouldn't click on and, uh, and doing some things like that. Um, we discussed the goals, our OIP process goals and had some nice discussion about that in terms of where we think we need to go. Um, we had, um, updates on what we're doing within the buildings, uh, which there's not a whole lot right now because I've got some of that scheduled for later on in the year. Um, uh, the main thing I've got to work on, and I've talked about this before, is, um, we've got to work on the Five Points, the evac plan. You know, we have a plan, we have a place, but you know, Five Points is a huge building in the middle of nowhere when it comes to other big buildings around. So I've got to try to make contact with that new church that's just about, not new, but churches down the road from it a little bit. No matter what, it all requires transportation sometimes to get the whole, you know, a thousand students somewhere. Uh, if we have to evac, uh, have an evacuation from, from Five Points. Um, so our next meeting is on October eleventh, so hopefully, uh, we can, you know, folks will be there. We'll, we're being on the swing of school and everything else and that'll be, uh, the next meeting. Anybody have your questions?
Is this where you're gonna bring up about building the bus garage, adding fifteen buses over there?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
I have a question, not about what you guys talked about there, but it did come up on this last month. Once again, way back, um, when board meetings were in here. Officer Don came because it was when we did an Alice training.
Right.
What is, what do we do for current staff with our training for that type of thing? I asked just because we did it for the agency that I work with and, you know, where the staff actually experienced, what it was like.
Correct.
What are we doing for our staff here with that type of?
Sergeant Don and, and Officer Nicely are the two that, that handle that training. Uh, they normally schedule it with the principals, especially since we've had a lot of new staff over the last couple of years. We need to have another one. Uh, one of the other pieces is with the, um, the new requirements that are out by the state. We have to have either a roundtable, a, um, an actual evacuation of our, the information of our plan or a, um, a live training. We have to do at least annually now. Uh, there was just introduced in the, in the seventh, I believe, about making it only, you have to do your evacuation plan once a year. So the, that's a big change for schools because, you know, the, just the, the idea of trying to implement your, your evacuation safety plan every year is, is tiny. It takes a lot of prep on, just not from, not from a standpoint of, you know, do we know what we're gonna do? Because the teachers are, they have, they know what they need to do to evacuate the building, things like that. But if you really are implementing this fully like you would normally do, you have to schedule people in, you have to schedule busing, you have to schedule things. There's a lot of prep work that has to occur. Um, Sergeant Don is trying to get a meeting with someone for us to be able to go through and talk through some of these things because the new requirements are pretty labor intensive and, you know, we have not a lot of labor people to implement some of that stuff. So we're trying to work through that piece.
Did you say it is required every year to actually have a?
There's, there's one of three things right now, either a table, a tabletop, a simulation involving, uh, you know, the community as well as this, that's not a full evacuation plan or implementing your full evacuation plan and, and, you know, when they, there's a, an active shooter in your building and you have to evacuate or something like that. So that you just take, you know, the evacuation plans are pretty intense. It can be a bomb threat, it can be, you know, the evacuation or the, uh, the, the plans, the safety plans are very involved. So there's about twenty or thirty different scenarios. You have to take one of those scenarios and go start to finish with it.
And I think the thing that, that struck me when I went through the training, I had sat through here and listened to the PowerPoint of what it was, but I didn't realize it wasn't you do A then L then I, it's, these are the different options you have to evaluate. And it's not always getting that positive, but that might be an option that is the best thing.
Correct.
So I think that especially since you said, you know, as we had new staff come in, it's really important to make sure that everybody's recognizing if you're in the library and this happens, you know, so it's not teaching you for the specific place where you're at, but it's a mentality of how you need to evaluate the situation. So I hope that we are doing that, not just in a piece of paper, this is what Alice is, but a real life situation. You know, it, we felt the emotion of it as, you know, we had to role play it out. And it was a very intense training and I think that's what really is preparing our staff if they're in that situation, you're gonna feel that intensity. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the financial insurance.
Um, yes, the fifteen that are, so you're, um, are on the step line. We discussed that a little bit, a little bit of our staff, we should be able to lock them up in six months, we get the number. Um, we also, we did a very good set of, when we get back to eighteen, um, we did use a five percent interest in seven percent. Um, we also discussed teacher safety, um, we, that's going, um, definitely we do a lot, fifteen, we're doing right, ten for the teachers. Um, and that will be, we'll get a lot of, we've got several different people on the video that's going to do a lot of collaboration on how we want to present things in the best way we can. Um, and our next, um, fifteen is October twelfth. So that will be, we'll have a full October twelfth, uh, one of our, that I interview, basically a, a prelude for the, uh, a little bit that will start the following week. So we have everything applied out exactly, this guy doesn't count anymore. So that'll be a little bit of a process between now and, so we have to get all of each of our staff, regardless of they made our interns or not after me. So we'll, our process will, so October twelfth is the next meeting. And we'll, we are gonna raise it up, we're gonna have more union presence on fifteen as well as some other people we ask for.
Moving on to the board policy committee, uh, my report will happen later during the superintendent's report as far as all the policy. We had a, we had very good attendants. We went through all the policies, everything that we brought to the board tonight came from the discussion and the approval of the committee to bring it to the board. Our next board policy meeting will be Friday, September twenty-seventh. Mr. President, I think we're done with the committees, we'll move to the chair's report.
Well, tonight, also I have a few donations, it's all on printout, um, starting with four point one. We have approval of the donation for a thousand dollars to the Boys Soccer Program from Don White Realty. Approval of the donation of a water system from the Touchline Club, um, that made two million dollars. And approval of donation of a rocket course from the Special Education Department from Don, the odd of the day of value that two hundred and fifteen dollars. Approval of donation of pool pairs of crutches to the Edline Department from Hill Park valued at one hundred dollars. Also an approval for a donation of four thousand dollars from the Goodman Company Concessions Day Account to the Boys and Girls Soccer Program. And we have approval of donations totaling six hundred and thirty dollars to the Harvick College. And we're gonna be bringing the money that's been used to build the entire Harvick, to the Slaughter High School. And we have donation, three donations totaling three hundred and fifty dollars to the New York Project.
The last four weeks were over seven hundred and five dollars. So this is now over a thousand dollars for a special project to yet to be determined, but if there are requests.
And also approval of five thousand dollar donation from the Optimist Public School for Duro to the Springer Athletics for coaches' virtual training. And approval of a donor's choose, I did just add this one, um, I got this this morning. Approval of the donation from the DonorsChoose.org project valued at seven hundred and twenty dollars in statistics for alternate CDs from the Cole Brown Sportsbook in this elementary.
What's the connection, um, for the Clear Creek Library? What is her connection to?
She used to be a librarian, she's been several years well. I think we decided to do that in the little towers.
Right. Amazing about that.
Superintendent here, Bob, uh, Jim Hough. Your son is, uh, with the insurance, Jim Hough. Also to the four graders. Is there a motion to accept items four one through four nine?
Certainly.
Sir.
Certainly.
Hold on.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Moving on, superintendent's report, the five point one is first read of several policies. I think everyone that can answer specific questions that maybe have not ever been asked or in the crowd today. Um, most of these are revisions, some are new. First three are revisions concerning weapons. Bottom line is with, with the change in law, a staff member is able to now, if they have concealed carries, if they have a gun in their locked vehicle on school grounds, uh, following the concealed carry guideline, which means gotta be a concealed vehicle. If someone left a gun on the seat, it's called, they're gonna lose their CCW license because of that. But you can now have it be an armed weapon, or they can have a weapon on school grounds locked in your vehicle. That's, that's the change there. Um, we have a new policy about the genetic information, I know we answered a few questions there. Replacement, one student assessment, academic intervention services, and third grade reading guarantee. Uh, as explained earlier, twenty-six, twenty-three, they both release together. EOLA has given us really taken the two and has split those, uh, those two out to assessment for one, third grade reading guarantee for the other.
So, hang on just a second, so with that, there was nothing different with the, with the accommodation part of it? It's just they separated it into two separate policies?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I didn't, I couldn't find anything different in what they were doing. I just wanna make sure that the verbiage is the, the accommodation is the same.
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty-two hundred and, uh, is concerning to the attendance that the entire county is doing. Um, rolled out throughout the entire, uh, organization, just doing, they're reporting student progress, it's revision fifty-four twenty, class rank fifty-four thirty. We have replacement on the graduation targets, we talked about that in Andrea Cook, their previous board meeting. And then the, uh, participation extracurricular activities for students not enrolled and just students who, and their home school and charter school can participate in some of our extracurricular activities because they actually, they're in the right world. Again, all of these are first read, we appreciate the questions already asked, any other questions?
Can I ask Kyle, and I know that he's already come and explained this, but I still can't get it fully through my head, the attendance policy. Can you explain the eight and the twelve thing again? The date, the difference?
Yeah, why don't you chime in if you, if you, like, miss something?
I just, I can't fully process it, people have been asking me and I need to hear it again.
Before we used to have eight, uh, parents would have eight parent notes that could use during the school year. And pretty much, I mean, to be honest, if you go, you could take, in those eight days could be used to go on vacation. If you call and said, you know, John's sick, does not come in, parent, basically an eight notes to use to excuse their absence.
Okay.
What they've gone to now is they've gotten rid of the eight days because the state is moving with House Bill, they're moving to, to county hours now. So they're going to, from eight days to twelve occurrences. So really what that ends up being is now actually parents have really basically twelve occurrences. And that ranges from, if a student comes tardy to school, they sign it at seven thirty-four, and a parent writes note, that's one occurrence. If they missed the entire day, that's one occurrence.
That's.
So now, yeah, and then so at thirty-eight hours now, once a student reaches thirty-eight hours, whether it's unexcused or excused or combined, regardless, a warning letter goes home. If I pull Brandon, Patty on a dentist to go on a five, uh, six day vacation, that's going to be about forty-one, forty-two hours. I'm gonna get a warning letter at the mail stating, hey, FYI, your child or children have missed more than thirty-eight hours of school. It's just a warning letter. But it's a combination of excused and or unexcused, it could be all excused, it doesn't matter. Um, real, the, the penalty comes in is when you start accumulating three different levels of unexcused hours. That's when the attendance intervention meetings will take place, um, et cetera. So that's, it's, they're, they're really charting the hours, they're not charting all of the occurrences. We are, once you get past twelve, it's a mandatory documents note. But last year was once you got past eight, parent notes, it was a mandatory documents note.
So you said the occurrences count the same if somebody's tardy or if they missed the entire day, they kind of, but the hours are tracked differently in those scenarios? That one would be a certain number of minutes and the other one would be the, the entire school day?
Right, so if you, i- i- if, if you miss two days of school and one day you come in, you have two occurrences, one day you're, you come in later vital, two hours. And then you miss a full day, and our full day is just say for you, it's easy for you to say seven hours, and two days you accumulate nine hours.
Okay.
And we track that down to the minute.
Yes, you feel like that's the part that, yeah, that's some confusion, the fact that the occurrences are true, they both count as an occurrence? So I've heard people saying, well, if I'm, if I'm gonna get an occurrence, then I might as well just keep them out the entire day. But I'm, but there's, so there's clearly a misunderstanding there in terms of, because I've heard that from several people that sort of view it that way. Because they're both, they're thinking, they both get treated as occurrences. I'm not sure that it's clear that, yes, they count toward that twelve the same, but they, the hours are tracked separately. It feels like that seems to have maybe been lost in translation.
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah.
Draw a picture or something. Pretty cool video of Wendy on the website.
Yes, yes. And again, I'm, we probably communicated. Um, I, I don't dispute that, I, it's just for whatever reason, it seems to have not really sunk in, I think just through some of the conversations that I've, I've heard.
I would, I would agree that it's, even for us, it's been more confusing. Because before, it was, it was a very cut off, it was all based on, on, on days. Now, before though, if a student was a half a day, you know, or tardies, for parent notes would equal one parent note of that eight in years past. So there are still some little things that parents and students probably didn't see as much as we did here as far as tracking those total eight days. So when you break it down, it's really, you know, you could have somebody who used eight parent notes, but technically was late four times, that's one note, missed three days. There's four was late four other days, there's five, so really had probably more than twelve occurrences to get those eight notes. So, do you wanna add anything, Wendy, or?
We have tried to be very specific, like for everybody that took their child out for the solar eclipse, we let them know it's one occurrence and then this is how many minutes that would add up for them. Um, I think that's also on the video and, um, I think we also have that covered in the policy.
Where is the video?
Online.
Who's in the video?
Pardon me?
Who's in the video?
We're online.
Yeah.
We're, we're online.
It's under attendance.
Yeah, there's that tab under, under the district tab, student attendance policy.
And I found it along with like the, the letter. But I was still, now is I guess the other piece that I've heard too, is just the differentiation between the excused and the unexcused. Again, because they both count.
Correct.
Toward the occurrences.
To a warning letter.
For the warning letter.
Correct. Now, when you start getting to the AIT meetings, that's, now you're getting to your, your basis of your, like, that's what the unexcuses totaling out to thirty-eight, forty-something and seventy-two.
If it's unexcused.
Yeah.
If, yeah, it depends on if it's like concurrent, if you have thirty in a row. If it's thirty consecutive hours of unexcused, forty-two unexcused in a school month, or seventy-two unexcused in a school year. We already have some that are already falling into this category, so we'll have intervention meetings with them probably within the next, probably two to three weeks.
And, and the kids that are kind of falling in that category are students who have said or aren't coming, that have, that we've been told are moving, but we just haven't actually received a record request from the other school yet. We start to count with not being here.
That would be some of them, we also have some, uh, some of our kids that have anxiety issues and the parents just keep them home to try to deal with anxiety issues and they're not coming to school. Um, once they hit passes twelve occurrences, then they'll get the letter and then we'll have to have a meeting.
So would it help, do we, do you want doctor notes or are they just useless up to the twelve? Do we really only need them at thirteen? I mean, because that's another question that people ask, for the people, I guess aren't out that much, but for people whose kids are out, do you want notes in one through twelve? Or does that really not matter until the thirteenth occurrence?
I think you should always provide doctor's notes if you have them, because if you're gonna have to come in and have a meeting, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna go through all of the reasons why they wouldn't be at school. And so if you can show me that you've got doctor's notes for these things, there's an illness here, that might play into what we do later on with your case.
Okay.
And I kind of, I tell, tell parents, I mean, your occurrences or years past, your parent notes, those are for extenuating circumstances that maybe doesn't require a doctor's visit. If you're going, if you're gonna be gone for two days because you're going to Grammles, that would be one that you use. If, um, if you're, you know, you wake up, you kind of got. If, if you're, you know, you wake up, you kind of got the flu, but you really maybe don't need to go to the doctor, that's a parent note. So if you take the student to the doctor and turn in a parent note, you're really sacrificing a parent note by doing so when you could just turn in a doctor's note. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what happens is that the parents, then you know, then they want to take their kid on a Friday to go visit grandma, grandpa, then, well, you're out of parent notes. Well, if I would have known that, I would have used a doctor's note. Well, I understand that, but you did use a doctor's note, so then they want to bring in a doctor's note, this was three months ago. So that's where, if you take your kid to the doctor, we always recommend bringing a doctor's note, plus, like you said, when you go to intervention meetings, it's nice to be able to have doctor's notes there versus just a bunch of parent notes.
And the goal of the intervention meeting is to try to understand why your child's not at school. So it's to come up with a plan to have the child and the parent be successful. It's not to, our goal is not to get them in trouble, the goal is to get the child here to be able to reduce whatever barriers to their education there are.
But it's still thing you want, the, this is the letters, because they count as excused absences, right? So isn't it thirty-eight hours of unexcused where it triggers the...
No, it's that thirty, it's a combination of excused and unexcused.
For the warning letter.
Correct.
Right, but then the next thing says, if a student acquires thirty-eight hours of unexcused occurrences, an absence intervention team meeting will be assigned.
Right, that's correct, that's correct.
So I'm saying, you want to use, you want the doctor's note, because yes, the occurrences, whether they're excused or unexcused, doesn't matter to trigger the letter, but it sounds like if they're unexcused, it triggers the meeting.
That's correct.
I think the question was last year, if going to a doctor that insurance would pay for could keep them away from Warren County calling them, they would go to the doctor to get the doctor's note. So that's where some questions are, when you're getting near the end of the year. You see what I'm saying?
You know, what might be a good idea is like question to answer fact sheet.
Thank you.
Yeah, frequently asked questions and kind of going through that. I think that might be a good idea.
I mean, I'll be honest, it's, I think everybody here would agree, it's been, it's been a challenge adapting to that change, from just truly understanding all the pieces, because occurrences and hour are completely different. People wanted to put them together.
I think tonight, what's been good with a couple of board members here with the questions that they're hearing, I think if you guys wouldn't mind sending those questions to me and that star fact sheet that Scott will work on with Kyle, with Wendy and me, if we can get that out.
And it very well might be that they're all addressed in the video. My kids don't miss very much, and this isn't a concern to me, but the people that have been asking me, their kids do miss more, and so they think I know the answers to everything with this, and they really don't. So this information does help, but I do think that FAQ would, I think it would help, but I'll also leave them to your videos.
And you might direct them to the website as well, and it's got my phone number. I probably feel five or six questions or phone calls every single day on this subject.
Really?
So if you wanted to send them my way, it'd be easier instead of you trying to...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I almost wondered, Mr. Fennell, we should break the screen down and show that video for everyone.
That's not a good idea. I feel like, I feel like I'd ask...
I love you, Wendy.
What?
All right.
I have a question on the last one, just me that if you're home schooled, you had to go to school, I think, two periods a day.
No. No. That, now, they, if they're home schooled, if they're charter school, they live here, they're part of this, they've got to make the team.
Right.
Answer questions. Moving on to five point two, this is the approval of...
I do have a question.
Sorry.
Sorry. So if we vote in next meeting, the, was it under recording student progress, is where we would be doing the student distinction, then will we report, will we, I feel like we need to communicate out to the high school parents that we voted this in, and that it will be changing for the class, the junior class.
We've actually been communicating that all along, we just haven't given a date when the board finalized this.
I know.
But through the different parent meetings that Kyle's had and so forth, but as soon as the board will approve it next month, then we would blast this thing out, yes.
Right, okay.
And I'm not even opposed, maybe, if we even communicate, since that's officially gone for first read, that way if anybody has any last minute concerns from last month, they have, they have four weeks to voice it.
I don't think we could over communicate on this. I don't want to feel like it's being slid under.
Hey, FYI, what we talked about last year, now on the first read, but if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Five point two, the approval of the education board, great one with the education first. It's an actual agreement here for your approval. To give you a little background on this, we've been doing international terms here for several years. Early in the school year, the art crew and Spanish team met with us, talked about some of the changes that had happened in the past. Kyle and I met with them, and we actually ended up bringing our attorney in, because there was some confusion on what was part of the tour company and what was part of the school. And it really kind of blew me for a loop that they could have, we didn't have full control of this. The tour company was giving so many tour, you know, so many trips with this person or that person, sometimes the teacher was kind of on duty, sometimes they weren't, it was just kind of strange. So what we did was, we actually had our attorney work very closely with the tour agency development agreement, and this one is for our Spanish teacher, as they're getting ready for a two-thousand day tour, just to really clarify who's in charge, you know, and how the accommodations are going to be taken care of, how the chaperones are going to be doing, what's going to be paid and so forth. So this has actually been, would you say, probably a three to four month process here?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, and we've got a real good, solid, solid degree to your role. All right? That one we need to present.
Is there a motion to accept five point two?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Yes, the motion?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Yes. Fennell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, six point one is our annual approval of payment of, in lieu of transportation. Those are for those schools that there aren't enough ridership to be able to take a bus there effectively, efficiently to pay for that. So those are our normal schools that are there, and are just our normal stuff. The one thing that's changed this year that, that they just found out about the other day is, in the budget bill this year, this is now an unfunded mandate. This will not be funded by the state. Up until this year, it was just a flow through. We'd send it up there, we'd tell them how many people, we'd tell them how much we paid, and they would give us the state minimum. Starting this year, it comes out of general fund.
How much is that, how much was it?
Not, they haven't set that figure yet, that as far as I know, have they?
Yes, they said it was two hundred and fifty dollars, I believe that's what it's been.
It's, yeah, I don't think it was an increase in this year.
Yeah, I went to a budget analysis seminar last month, I believe, and it's set at two fifty. I wouldn't say it cost us anywhere, it depends how many riders, I mean, it has...
Yeah, I just wondered, mattered how many?
Maybe fifty, seventy thousand.
Right. That's about it.
And I do know that they're still pushed to go back and buy some of these things. There has been some revisions already to the budget bill, several that I've been going through, and this is one that they're still trying to get some sort of help on, because there are districts who have a law of law for population who take advantage of this thing in law, is for the reporting programs, private schools, things like that. So it is still possible, and we won't even start receiving our fiscal year eighteen funding until October or November, so there's still time for some of these changes, so I'll make sure we get out as soon as I hear it, and then change towards some of those dollars for that. But it's outside the cap, so.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's not to affect the cap, I mean, but we'll be, we'll still survive it.
Just another surprise that was hidden in the budget bill that nobody knew, it was a big surprise of the, the meetings you went to. Six point two is approval of our bus stops, it's our annual bus stop approval. Six point three is approval of our band camp staff. You know, we have a new marching band director, and he's been doing a great job and all, and it's just, you know, this first year, he's trying to get everything going, and he was doing great, and he's trying to get everything done, he just gets caught up a little bit, and believe it or not, it's, we're still earlier than we were last year approving the final band camp staff workers. Six point four is approval of a consulting contract with Lizzie Nedley as math coach. This is something we did last year and the year before, and we've got that again.
How much money do we have left in that?
We started with sixty, and we've used her for probably under fifteen hours this point, around fifteen to twenty.
It'll be total over forty-five thousand for that currently.
Which, is she at SI?
She's doing Clear Creek, Dennis, and Firefights. So all the...
Do we have a math coach at SI at all?
No, we do not.
Do we have any coaches at SI?
No, we do not.
We're hoping the wonderful work she did the last couple of years will continue.
So is that just based off of the data and what our needs are?
Yes.
Sure.
Six point five, approval of a continuing contract for Charlotte McGinley. She had a continuing contract when she was hired here years ago, but she, because of whatever reason, she never asked for it again here, and so this year she asked for it, and by law, we have to approve a continuing contract for her if she had one here in the state of Ohio in a previous school district. So that's, that's a, just happens to be one of those things that is just required. Six point six, approval of personnel items. Unfortunately, we do have one resignation that's going to hurt really badly. Emily Geisel has been hired as the tech goddess up at Sherwood, so she will be starting there on September eleventh, so fortunately, the eighth will be your last day here, and it's going to be a big loss for us, but just like everything else, we just keep on going. Next one, we've got educational assistants, she's resigning because she's going to be doing her student teaching, so she may end up back here as a teacher here real soon, but she has to get that done. Then we have some employment of classified and certified personnel. All those folks were hired based on need. The one, Kevin Gallagher down there at Clear Creek, that was the additional first grade we added. The educational assistants, all of those are related based on one-to-one needs or needs for IEP students that is written in the IEP. So every one of those that's there, that's the requirement for that. We have the bus aides, we have some bus driver aides, bus drivers, and then some various substitute classified staff members. If I have any questions?
I just, I kind of wondered, for the bus aides, is that just based off of, like, do buses that have special needs kids get bus aides, or is there extra energy on the bus that she's funded, or?
These are, these are all based on the needs of the students, majority of which are special ed. We do have one special case that, that we needed to put an aide on a bus, and we've, and that's, we've taken care of that piece.
Sure.
You know, there was, but it's all, it's all special ed related.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to accept items six one to six six?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Full call.
Yes, the motion?
Yes.
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 And finally, six point eight is approval of the athletic supplementals, or athletic personnel report. We have a camp worker, we have supplemental resignation, temporary health, and then just some other approvals of some other supplemental folks.
Is there a motion to accept six point eight?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Full call.
Yes, the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. President, we're down to the board member reports, comments. I had reminded the video in section, section tonight, so this is the last quarter.
Yeah, all I wanted to do was, it seems like every board meeting I'm doing this, thank Mr. Fennell, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Wiggins for another information-packed session. I love the data that you guys present, and I really appreciate the way you presented this, the twelve months, so thank you. And then I guess, just thank you to various groups that donated money to all the, you know, the different areas around the school, it's always appreciated and, you know, always good to do, so thank you to those groups. That's it.
I just want to say, I hope everybody is doing a good start to the school year. It seems very, very positive from what I've heard so far, and there's a lot of energy this time of year, and so it's, it's great to see, and I hope it continues to start the year, so I hope everybody is enjoying the start to another great year.
I have a couple of things. One is thanks to the parents that have donated lots of stuff, even at the high school, the Pulse Group asked for donations, because a lot of the high school teachers don't get any donations, like in elementarys, we automatically donate tissues and wipes and stuff like that, so they, parents have been donating at the high school level to the teachers, so they don't have to go outside them, so thanks for that. The report card, thank you for that data, that is awesome to see and to know that we're using that to look and evaluate what we're doing and how we're doing things. So that's, that's really encouraging to see and just to know that we're, that we're really using that for, to move us ahead. My last question was just, when we did the committee reports, if there is a parent, like you had mentioned, or John had mentioned with the State Theory Committee, if there's a parent that wants to join the committee, is now the time, or is January, that we're evaluating parents that are, that would like to join a committee?
We actually sent it out in spring, and so a lot of parents, we already added down, we added...
Michelle Bauer.
In this committee, we added it to more policy meetings, so we've now, District Parents Council, the principals are going through that right now, for our person there.
So do parents ask if they want to be, or do principals?
Some, yeah, the principals go out next, yes.
Okay, so that's the only committee that has parents joining right now? All the rest of them have already?
All the rest are good.
Are good, okay.
I'll leave mine, yeah.
Those are the six committees.
I'm always looking for people, whoever would like to come, um, come in finance.
So like, what do you want for budget and finance? Like what? Do you want somebody with finance background, or?
Not exactly, because it is not as, it's more of a collaboration and conversation instead of having a financial car, because there wasn't one person who had shown interest, and so I gave all the information, and I'm bringing it back, so maybe, you know, they may be still interested at some point, but I'm always looking for just that extra, you know, so I put stuff on the website and things like that, but I feel like there's more to get out, and it's kind of part of the channels to get out stuff, but it's so exciting. So, I mean, if anyone ever is interested in being on a budget, contact me, you know, you want to have it, it's good to know.
Last thing is just a personal experience with a teacher, and it just, it keeps my perspective in remembering the quality of the teachers that we have here, and teachers that it is clear that they're not here to just put in their seven to three, or nine to five, or whatever, but that truly are digging deep into your specific child. So how many students do language teachers have in their class?
For English?
Uh, no, for like Spanish.
Oh, Spanish? Anywhere from probably twenty, as low as probably twenty-two, to as high as close to as thirty to thirty-one.
Right, so times seven class periods, six class periods, however many, so that's a lot of students that they're having. And I had a correspondence back and forth with the teacher, and I was just so, so impressed, it's actually the teacher, I don't know her at all, what's her, she's going on a trip, so we just approved, Anna?
Aston.
This is Aston.
Aston, this is Aston. So impressed with the feedback that she gave of how to help my son study, in very specifics of only studying ten terms at a time for two minutes at a time, that's all that they could handle, and once they know that term, put it down, pick up another one, specifics, I was just, you could tell that she, and she's already getting to know him as a learner, and I just was so impressed with the things that she gave specifically for him, and wanting to meet with us. So it just reminded me that clearly she's one of, never, I have no clue who she is, but I'm going to meet her tomorrow, but it's just very encouraging to, it just reminds me the quality of the teachers and the staff that we have here that really care for kids, and they're not just checking the box and putting in the time. So, thanks to all the teachers. That's it.
All right. Congratulations to all the staff for a pretty good start this year, echoing what already been said about the donations and the three amigos, that was a great presentation. I just have one question again. When does the eligibility start for, I've had people ask me about, for athletics, and when are we going to start as?
I want to say next Friday.
This, so this week, there'll be, teachers will be...
I want to say, I think, I think next Friday will start first reporting time.
Okay.